Good afternoon, good morning or good evening, depending where you are in the world for joining us for today. My name is Professor Perry Hobson. I'm based at Somewhere University here in Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia. And it gives me great pleasure to introduce my colleagues and co-founders of Thirty Minute Talks, Dr. Andy Nazarchuk. Andy, hello.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Andy Nazarchuk and happy to be here today to do a little discussion on the status of education considering the global pandemic.
That's right. And also to Alan.
Yeah, thank you Perry and Andy. Welcome, everybody, all the ICE members. And as always, it's an absolute pleasure to join the ICE colleagues and friends today at today's webinar. I think we've all had a relationship with the ICE over the years, so we look forward to sharing some of those comments with you, as well as our thoughts on surviving COVID-19 and what the hospitality and the education industry might look at for the future.
Absolutely. And in fact, all of this, in fact, Alan was at the one of the first meetings we had as we revisioned the ICE back in 2008. Alan, that was 12 years ago. Think of that, when we're in the then Sheraton Hotel in Perth, trying to work out where things should go as the Australian government, then the Australian government funding ended. So Alan was involved with the ICE for many years, sat on the Board of Directors. And Andy has been very involved with the ICE as well as an accreditor, working on our panel of accreditors, having visited many different institutions. So from the three of us who've been long time involvement with the ICE in different forms and capacities, and having been involved in education, hospitality and tourism education, not only in Australia but across Asia. Dr. Andy and I also worked together at Taylor's University in Malaysia after he'd spent many years in Singapore and before that at UNLV in the United States. Alan, having run his own school in Perth in Australia for many years, then was also on the board of the ICE, worked as I said, for many years. So a huge amount of hopefully perspective that we can bring and to some of the challenging issues that we see hospitality tourism education facing at the moment. So the three of us earlier this year co-founded what's called Thirty Minute Talks. And Andy, why don't you talk a little bit about that and some of the things we've been doing through that?
You know, it's one thing when the pandemic started back in March, near the end of March is when we got involved and schools started to close down, we decided that there was a need for some type of online education information for students because it happened so quickly that universities weren't really ready to offer those online classes as much as they are today. So if you think we started Thirty Minute Talks and we have had 33 weekly programs, we've never missed one. We've had speakers, we have different topics, we've had over 5,000 students sign and register and academics sign and visit and watch the show since April. Our average attendance is about 150 to, and we've had, I think the largest was 600 at one time. And we have quite a few partners and I know Alan's going to tell us about those partners, right?
Yeah, thanks, Andy. I'm sure everybody knows, including the ICE, that without partners, without collaboration, without people that are like-minded and willing to work with you, none of these organizations would be able to move forward and achieve, I guess, some of the things that we've achieved. So we always look forward to thanking academic partners and specifically what we'd like to mention is thank you also to the ICE for being an academic partner of Thirty Minutes and supporting us since the start of Thirty Minute Talks.
And we've had, you know, various different sessions. So each week we bring in different presenters to Thirty Minute Talks. And as Andy's already mentioned there, we've had now something like 33 different shows. A couple of weeks ago, we had Sarah Gardner. I've worked with Sarah. She's based at Griffith University. And she's done a lot of work on reimagining tourism and on crisis management recovery, those sorts of things. And so she gave a really interesting presentation to us. That was, I think, two, three weeks ago, wasn't it?
Yeah. So all of our videos are available on our website. So if any schools out there want to see our videos, join the website and take a look. And of course, we have quite a few attendees today from LPU, so welcome to them. And Perry, I guess the first question is, I guess you guys start the first question.
Yeah. So the first question is going to be, where are things going to be going in the future? So are we going to be looking at a world that's going to, things are going to go well, things are going to go badly? So Andy, what's your view on how do you think things are going to be going from here?
I don't think I'm going to talk about this one. I think we'll let Alan take care of this.
Yeah, I was going to say, Perry, I let Andy talk about the downside, but let me just share with you what I think is some of the upside. So whilst COVID has infected millions worldwide and I guess sparked fears of the worst recession since the Great Depression, there's been many inadequacies that have been discovered over the past number of months in leadership in healthcare that have sent ripples through society. And I guess as I'm an overall optimist, I like to see a positive upturn and the other side. So let's look at the upside to what I've seen since March this year. I think from a tourism perspective, tourism and businesses have had an opportunity, although it's been a forced opportunity to reset, asking fundamental questions. For example, the trend to move from overtourism or mass tourism to a more resilient and sustainable model for the future. What about inclusive or regenerative tourism, for example? And UNESCO has got on their site now that you can join as a sustainable tourism pledge for operators to sign. I think work patterns have become more flexible. People have been spending more time with families. I think adapting to interpersonal norms, new interpersonal norms, generally everyone has become a bit more supportive of each other and a bit more tolerant of each other. I think tourism and hospitality businesses and education has had to pivot to cater to new markets. So it's been leading to some new strategic thinking and new innovative thinking as a key for survival. And let's not forget, the hospitality and tourism industry has really played a lead role in supporting the pandemic response effort. And that's including providing meals in hotel rooms and vouchers for medical staff and all those sorts of things. So I think the hospitality industry itself has been quite immersed in this. And something that needs to be said is that I think promoting safe, healthy, COVID-safe business operations, businesses have had to develop and implement more robust health and safety protocols. And finally, I think just a final point about the world has become a bit more comfortable with technology. And today is a good example of the use of technology. And I think really the COVID is forced to the forefront, digital innovations that normally would have taken a lot longer to be used or adopted, that we're now seeing as the normal. What about yourself, Andy?
I'm going on the downside, Alan. You know, the world's got a pandemic, travel is down. Today in the United States is Thanksgiving. Even though people are not supposed to travel, they had 50 million people on airports traveling on Thanksgiving, getting ready for the holiday. And you think that's a lot of people? No, it's actually 50% less than it was a year ago. So the industry has less people traveling, hotels are having trouble, restaurants are closing, hospitals are busy. And we're sitting and trying to figure out how are we going to educate students for the next generation when everything is in complete turmoil. So today I am going to be giving my painful strategies when we finish our presentation. And I hope that everybody will listen to those carefully because I think we're going to have to really get ready for some rough few months coming up as we prepare to reboot our education industry and hospitality industry. And with that.
Well, look, I'm sitting between, I can see two different views of the world where we're going with this. An absolute optimist and an absolute pessimist on things. So I'm going to take a little bit of the middle term here. I think that when things do come back, they won't go back. And as Alan's pointed out, you know, do we want to go back to the problems we had in 2019 of overtourism, wringing our hands about the problems we had too much? So we've gone from overtourism to no tourism. I guess the question is going forward from here, will we value travel a bit more? Will we be thinking more seriously about sustainability issues that we were faced with? And so I'm a bit optimistic, but I think the challenge is going to be making that change and that mindset change. And there was a very good ask I read recently in the Financial Times, talking about pandemic as portal. It's like a time shift portal you've got to go through and you remember how things were and you're stuck in that. We want to remember how things used to be, but we're having to deal with the reality of engaging with a world that's very different. And as been pointed out, that technology and we've got used to doing things in different ways. And so those business trips that people used to take, were they really all that necessary? We just thought they were because that's what we did back then. So the challenge, I think, is going forward and this is going to be very interesting to see how this pans out. And I think for education, we're a little bit in the eye of the storm and changes will be coming. Andy?
Actually, you know, there is a storm brewing, Perry. There's no doubt about it. Whatever we've been doing in the past is over, international romance. You know, if you have any dependency on international students, you're in trouble right now. They're dropping to many countries. So how do you refocus in a highly competitive market? That's the big question for today. You know, if you look at the example, this is just a chart. The one thing that I noticed in this chart is in the US, for example, and it's representative of a lot of students, that the current young people has no impact on their interests of where they want to go to school. So if a student, a young person out there wants to go to one particular university, whether it be in Australia or in Malaysia or in the United States, one way or another, they're still going to go there. But the question is they can't. So that's one of the points, I think, for today's session is you have to understand that there is still a demand for certain universities because of their brand or the way they teach education. But right now there's a disruption in the system and I think we better start getting ready for that. Alan?
Yeah, thanks, Andy. And I think that the ICE at the moment is working on, dare I say, the student barometer and the international student barometer. And I guess that over reliance or over dependence on international students is something that is part of very much the surveys that are undertaken in evaluating your students and getting their feedback. But the value of international students is generally not very well explained, in my view, to the public at all. And this is not only true in Australia, but also in many countries that are highly dependent on international students traveling and studying in that country. And generally, in the past, most times the communities have rarely seen international students as being an inconvenience to them. So for example, in 2019, the international education contributed $37.6 billion to the Australian economy. But COVID has rarely shaken the higher education industry in Australia and no doubt everywhere else in the world. We've locked down cities, we've locked down suburbs and homes for a long while now. And for most of 2020, travel has become a thing of the past. So planes have been grounded and international borders have been closed. And this has really, really affected the international student markets. Most universities and education providers have had to make overnight transitions into teaching online and offering virtual student support. So if we look at the next slide, I think it's a nice message there to share with you. In this case, a new report by the Mitchell Institute has found that international student crisis in Australia is also causing a population shock. So there's another kick on to the demise of the international students that is at the moment only getting worse. The report estimates that over 300,000 international students, which is half the pre-coronavirus numbers, will be in Australia by July 2021. So a massive loss in international student numbers, but also a loss in population. So if travel restrictions remain in place, the pandemic has already cut the number of international students who would normally be in Australia by 210,000. That's taking into account the others that would have traveled since March this year. An international student data shows total enrollments are down by 12% since March 2020. Border closures mean new students are not replacing current students as they finish their courses. And the number of Australian enrolled international students now studying remotely from outside Australia has increased from 116 to 138,000. And I think that supports what you said, Andy, that there's students now that are happy to enroll into courses elsewhere and study from their home country on online courses. So the world is a-changing, as has been said. Perry?
Yes, it is. And you know, one quite an interesting thing here, working in Malaysia, has been to see that change. We work very closely with Lancaster University. We have 21 dual degrees with them. But this year, what we're beginning to see is that students who would rather go to the UK, starting here. And one of the challenges for Malaysia as a country has been that in fact, we had more students studying outside of Malaysia than we were bringing international students in. So the closed border is actually keeping more of those students in the country at the moment. So this is changing the dynamics. We're looking more transnational education. But what we're also looking at doing is working more closely with the partner, in this case Lancaster. And they've got campuses in Ghana. They've also got a partner in China. So now we're looking to see how we can cooperate with the network that we've already got there. And that's leading us into discussions about virtual exchange, sharing of teaching staff. We did a virtual visit to Lancaster recently. I couldn't send the students there, so we created a one-week virtual experience instead. So I think there's a range of different things that are happening here. And I think universities going forward are going to have to start to rethink and revision a little bit about what their future is going to look like. So as we've literally jumped in at the deep end into this digital space. So if we'd had this discussion a year ago and I'd said, all the ICE members and all the universities in the world will be going digital, I think you'd have told all the three of us that we were absolutely crazy. It has happened. So there's going to be no going back to that. I guess the question is going forward, what will that future look like? In terms of a blended space, a digital space, a more cooperative and collaborative space? Because a lot of that technology is very expensive to do. But also it means we've moved our professors and our teaching staff from just being in a walled garden, if you like, within that sort of Apple framework, if you want to use that as an expression, to now being digital professors. They can be anywhere, at any time. Andy?
You know, I think the one thing that we have to take into consideration is that there is a vaccine coming out. And while that's a very positive move, you know, the bigger question is it's going to take months, if not a year or more, for that vaccine to cover the world and for herd immunity to become a way we can defend ourselves. So the disruption is going to continue for a long time. And I think that Perry's point is well taken, is we're learning how to do things online and we're getting better at it every day. And are we going to want to go back to the ways we were doing it before? So Alan, what do you think of that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think there's no doubt that the changes that have already been put in place and are in motion at the moment, they will, in my view, become the new normal. We talk about the new normal. What does it look like? Well, I think there's no doubt that the digital age is here to stay. It's just to what extent does that digital age meet with students' needs and students' personal demands in the future as the digital age and the digital student starts emerging? And really how institutions adapt to that? I think it's also important noting that, you know, the two bull markets in the world, the Chinese market and the Indian market have been the two that have been most affected. So big numbers have been affected for global markets in the international education space. And replacing those in the short term, Andy, is always going to be a big challenge.
Yeah, I think the next slide is appropriate for the future of education. I know Perry, you're the expert in the future. Tell us all about it.
That's good. I do a short course every year at MCI on the future of tourism. And wow, what a year that was to try and teach that one. So I think looking forward and using this particular graphic of virtual reality. Now, I actually, funny enough, the other day dug up an article that I'd written 25 years ago about virtual reality and tourism. And you know, a lot of what we predicted back then, I'll be quite honest, hasn't yet happened. But dare I say, no one at that time saw the massive leaps we've made with mobile technology and other forms of technology which really have moved on. And I think VR or augmented reality day will come. And I think for institutions, this is really a moment whilst we've been thrown into a situation of, dare I say, trying to work out at this point with the pandemic to cope with that. It's been a real shock to the system. This is also giving us a chance to look at the future of education. After all, many other industries have gone through some form of digital disruption, whether it's been the music industry, movies with Netflix, et cetera, et cetera. Dare I say, like Walee Khaidi, we've gone over the cliff. We just didn't realize that we had gone too far and that finally reality has caught up with the situation. So I think the future of education, we've got to revision it. What is it that people will come to universities, to institutions, to hotel schools, tourism programs for in the future? And what technology are we going to need to build into this? Now, when we were looking at that, so this work was pulled out to look at what students have been saying. And in the US, about a third, 38%, said, yes, I'm quite happy to go online. About 32, another third said, no, another sort of third said, I'm not sure. So you know, this is not something it's seen to say absolutely not to. Now, of course, online universities have been around for a long time and they haven't been mainstream. And most of us, let's face it, were either contemplating blended, we're doing blended, we were somewhere in that space. I guess the question going forward is are we going to leapfrog into another space where we're using even more advanced forms of technology, which are there already? The gaming industry, I think, has shown a way forward and they'd be much more early adopters, for example, things like virtual reality. Andy?
You know, actually, I think we'll let Alan tell us about.
Oh, Alan, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, Perry. And listen, I agree with pretty well everything you said. I think the revisioning is absolutely part of what we see here and we've been talking about online. But I think, you know, in many cases for institutions, it might even be a bigger picture. It's a little bit looking at what might your institution look like in the future and how might your institutions adopt? And I picked up this graphic from a recent report from Ernst &amp; Young on the university of the future. And their modeling really asks for institutions to imagine moving yourself to the year 2030 into the future. And then in that scenario, 2030, 10 years down, what might the institution or the universities look like? And they've painted four different scenarios. And in scenario one, under the champion university model, the majority of students enroll in traditional undergraduate and graduate degree programs. And universities streamline their operations by transforming service delivery and administration. And the division between the vocational education sector and the higher education sector remains largely unchanged. So I guess in scenario one, you've got a very similar model to what is currently the fact, although there's no doubt that there's going to need to be some streamlining in order to make themselves survive. If you look down through the modeling then, in scenario two, the commercial university, this requires universities to be financially independent to ease the national budget pressures that have been felt, not only in Australia but across the globe. Education is a very, very costly commodity. At the same time, obligations for research have eased. This allows the landscape to become much more diverse with much fewer comprehensive universities and a much greater specialization for providers who can now play to their strengths under this deregulated model, whether that be in research or teaching or subject areas or focus on teaching and learning models or whatever. Students in this case might favor degree programs that offer work-integrated learning, for example, and that already is taking place in some of the institutions now. In scenario three, the emergence of the disruptor university is one that interests me. And this is really taking account for a completely deregulated sector that drives competition and efficiency. So in this scenario, continuous learners and their preferences for on-demand micro certificates dominates. And this really allows technology to disrupt the workplace and technology to be one of those drivers. Universities in this case will expand into new markets and services and compete against a range of new and local global educational service providers. So it's no longer competition within universities, but it's also competitions with other education providers. And finally, in the last scenario four, under a complete government restructure of tertiary education sector, to integrate universities and the vocational sector into one, prioritizing training and employability outcomes as human beings begin to be replaced by technology, which is a question and I guess something that we can explore later on. Continuous learners are the majority. They prefer unbundled courses, delivered flexibly online. In this scenario, universities restructure completely into networks that share digital platforms that encompass the sharing of research in campus, the sharing of learning and teaching resources and the encompassing and sharing of faculty and staff. So I guess those models have all got various benefits and downsides.
You know, Alan, if you think about it, if you think of the history of education, let's go back a couple of hundred years or we had apprenticeship program. Everybody went, became an apprentice to learn how to do something. Universities far and few between. So where are all those apprentice programs now? They disappeared because there was a disruption in the way things were, education happened. So today, will there be universities in the future? Because right now, what do students want? They don't want, I don't think, they like going online, but students over the years have been very accustomed to the student experience. They want to meet other people, they want to network, they want to do things on campus, they want to get away from their homes, they want to travel. All those things are part of the educational process. And that's actually something that, as you mentioned, I think the universities are going to have to adapt to. Perry?
Well, I think you're actually right. And I think that we're going to have to work out what is going to be the student experience. And with many, many countries around the world having loaded up with a lot of debt during this COVID pandemic, as this goes forward, although everyone's saying, oh, debt's cheap at the moment, you know, it's still going to have to be paid back. And I think a lot of countries will be faced with substantial budget challenges as we go forward into this space. So I think, you know, that means various public services and education, we want to, will be fighting for that dollar. So the question, I think, as we head into this is, will institutions have enough of the resources? Whether it's in terms of human resources, capital-intensive resources, cash resources to do the IT that would be deliver on that? And if they don't, how can you find out and work collaboratively to develop that? And as we've gone, as I mentioned before, from closed systems, like the Apple, if you like, a walled garden, to a more open system. Now, if we go that way, well, 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 back in time to say the traditional Oxford College, there was only one door into the college, one way in and one way out. And some people questioned that, whether that was to keep the students in or to keep the town out of the situation. But it was very much a walled environment. With now with the digitalization that opened that up substantially. And then that begs the question at the moment, we have credit courses. Once you start talking about micro credentials and then we start talking about scaffolding, you know, can we take different subjects from different places? Now, some institutions, I absolutely agree with you, it's about the student experience. So if I'm going to go to an institution, it's not just for the academic, it's a sense of community. It's a sense of growing up. There's a whole range of other, you know, things coming together in that. But many institutions may say, well, I don't need to offer absolutely everything. It's the day of this massive comprehensive university. Australia, as Alan would know, has got 45 business schools. Do you need 45 business schools, all teaching, delivering the same thing? They've all got marketing, one-on-one, accounting, one-on-one, et cetera, et cetera.
That's a good point, Perry.
Really sounds a big question.
Question from Osmond, who's asking Alan, where is the innovation from inside your model? The model, you know, what is the big innovation that we're going to see compared to universities?
Yeah, listen, and thanks very much, Osmond, for the question. For me, no doubt, first of all, the industry having to strategically look at itself and create a new vision, as Perry has mentioned, that really meets the students' future demands and needs is already, in my view, very innovative. I think in many instances, the education sector has been quite static. It's probably, the education industry, in my view, has probably been one of the last industries to move. It's still very traditional, as we're saying in this conversation right now. And that adopting new innovations, adopting new technologies, changing the traditional business model to something that is different. And I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like. I think just in strategically looking at what the new business model might be is already part of the innovation that we're talking about. And who knows what will come out of that? I don't think the fact that, you know, we've traveled since March until, what, November this year, as a function of COVID and the impacts of COVID, has really given us the true solutions. But I think the fact is that there is change about at the moment. And that change is creating new strategic thinking and new innovation. And no doubt that will most likely result in new innovative models in the education sector.
And Alan, actually, we just got a very nice statement from Tom Baum, who's talking about, we have to gain confidence and trust in the future of tourism and hospitality. And they just completed a study, but they're looking at the negative undertones of job losses, safety issues over the same period. So how do we demonstrate to key stakeholders that students do have a meaningful future in tourism and hospitality? Perry, what do you think?
Well, look, that's a really good one, Tom. And you know, that's something I think that we recognize very early on in the piece. And that was really part of the discussion the three of us had about why we ended up with Thirty Minute Talks. We saw an industry that was at the forefront of just having to stop, literally stop dead and the implications that would have. And I think for any industry, as this change comes along, you can be part of the damage. You can be the collateral damage in what is happening in that. And clearly, as we go out of this pandemic, hopefully with the vaccine, as Andy said, which will be delivered, but it will take time to roll that out. You know, some of the digital changes have jumped us forward. And so some of those, what I call transactional jobs, will not exist anymore. And I think that's going to be the interesting thing is to understand where that will be. And of course, people will look at the industry in new ways. We'll see it as a much riskier industry, perhaps, I don't know. But then again, many other industries are going to also be changing significantly too. So we're not alone in that. And I think when it comes to meaningful futures, you know, we're going to have to align ourselves with a lot of other issues of such as environmental concerns, et cetera, to be seen as a good industry again as well.
Actually, you know, that's a good lead into our next slide here. And actually, what is the future of the industry realistically going to look like? And so if you say, you know, right now, there's a big focus on health. Obviously, everyone has to learn sanitation and how to handle customers with considered COVID. There's less mass tourism. I think that's a key thing for our industry is now people are looking for high wealth individuals, they're looking for less people to come to their destinations so that they can have more social distancing to protect them. And again, I think your point's correct, Perry, high tech. You know, if you go into a store these days, you no longer pay cash, you're using digital, whether it be a credit card or a debit card or a cryptocurrency, which is starting to happen. All those things are more high-tech, so the evolution is changing. And I think we mentioned in Thirty Minute Talks the other day where maybe the customer will be able to demand having a real person at the front desk rather than go. rather than going into an automated hotel. That might be the value proposition that the industry might start to offer is having real people in the store instead of having robots. So let's take a look, let's talk about that a little bit, Alan.
Thanks, Andy. Yeah, I think absolutely, you're right. With the movement to more high-tech, there's no doubt that that will change the industry. But I think it will also have significant impacts on the education industry. Self-directed mobile learning could really, in my view, form the core, the very core of formal education models in the future. And I say that because whether that's through adaptive learning apps, one-on-one blended learning models, more personalized learning and using learning algorithms to personalize education, or even the self-directed learning that we're speaking about, enabling the user to access learning at a time that's convenient to them at their fingertips on their mobile device is significant in terms of transforming the education industry. So the future of learning for me is no doubt, undoubtedly, mobile, personal and self-directed. But whether it's effective or not depends on exactly what has been personalized. So institutions, if they may, and if I can suggest this, in many instances, might need to get out of the way and focus on students how to learn rather than what to learn. And I think that's a significant shift in education for the future. Self-directed and mobile learning movements allow for much greater rationalization of industry needs and student demands of the future. And I think this has really been not only driven by the change brought about by COVID, but I think it's definitely been brought about by the digital student of the future.
Alan, that leads right into our next topic there, collaboration. And I think this is probably one of the key, most important points of the session. Why don't you start off with this? Tell us about collaboration, Alan.
Thanks, Andy. So if we're suggesting that every institution needs to go online in the future and that self-directed and mobile learning is going to be a key to the future successes of education, then this poses a key question. Do all universities, as Perry was saying a moment ago, or higher education institutions or providers, need to teach all the subjects? So I think Perry mentioned, across 45 universities, do you need 45 business schools that all teach introduction to marketing, introduction to business, introduction to whatever it may be? And some of the views might be a little bit different in that respect. Let's have a look at the next slide, because I think this really links to comments about whether you optimize or you transform. So this little graphic comes from KPMG in their report on the future of higher education in a disruptive world. And they suggest that many universities and higher education institutions around the world are fast approaching crossroads that will define their future in terms of strategy and operating models. And the key questions that they will be asking are, do they need to completely transform? Meaning, do they need to significantly change their strategic ambitions or fundamentally shift their value propositions or their business models entirely? Or do they optimize, which is requiring them to improve organizational effectiveness and efficiencies in order to improve overall performance and meet the new strategic ambitions? Or do they do nothing and react later? Or I guess they've got another choice. Do they do nothing and face the inherent risks of their inaction? So there is some key questions that have been asked about, do you need to transform or optimize, or again, do you do nothing, or do you react later? So KPMG in this report indicates that for the majority of the institutions that we know today, the realistic choice likely falls between transforming and operating and all that goes along with this. And in order to actually put that into place in a reasonably short period of time, effectively, you can achieve transformation through slow optimization is effectively what they're saying. That is optimizing while taking the risk of fresh disruption, upending them in the meantime. So those institutions that transform more rapidly will more than likely be the ones that will last the longer. And those that optimize and take their time over a transformation period run the risk of being beaten to the closing, the finishing line. So whether you select to transform or optimize, the building blocks are effectively the same from a business modeling perspective. That is reviewing your strategy, your mission and your purpose, improving your core capabilities, whether that be research, teaching, learning, collaboration, internationalization, whatever it might be, or all of the above. Whether you adopt a target operating model and understand very clearly what your operating model is, or you adopt and you modernize technologies throughout the institution. So I think it's a nice way of putting into place some of the choices that institutions will face in the future, Andy.
Yeah, I think Perry's topic, you said that Oxford only had one door. So how, the question is, how long did it take for them to add the second door? And what motivated them to do it? You know, did it take five years, 100 years? So, you know, that's sort of an example of you got, everybody's got to have to change and learning about technology is the key. Perry?
Well, just to go back to the Oxford and Cambridge situation, for many hundreds of years, there weren't allowed to be any other universities in the UK. So the government tightly controlled it. And then only a couple hundred years ago decided, oh, we better allow more institutions to come in. So, you know, again, we're very tightly regulating education in many parts of the world as well. Again, that begs back to an earlier point, Alan made there about, you know, will things open up even further? So when we digitalize things and you can make things much more available. And, you know, obviously, we can get all that content. And even several years ago, my daughter said to me, well, Dad, I don't need to go to university anymore because there's Google. Now, interestingly, my youngest one has just finished her high school. She's very keen to go to university and wants face-to-face. Now, not, I think in the discussions with her, it's not the only thing she's expecting the university to give her. So again, she's looking for a blade at that age. So again, I think there's going to be differences between different levels of courses, whether we're talking vocational, whether we're talking bachelor's, master's, PhD, et cetera. Those, there will be significant differences and challenges there. But my hunch is, as we go forward into this, dare I say, new space on that, again, going back to this transformation, the question will be, you know, as governments allow institutions to max and niche, max, mix and match to cooperate, we're going to see much more of that happen. Because institutions, I don't believe, will have enough resources to be able to keep doing everything they're doing at the moment.
Yeah, you know, I think that's a good point, Perry. You know, if you look at, you look at a chart like this, you know, a lot of universities take advantage of those key markets, China, India, and they say, let's go get more of those students. I think universities have to redefine who their markets really are. And today, your domestic market is one key. And you have to look at it two ways. If, let's say you have, you want students coming from Italy. Well, they can't come right now, or they won't come right now. So you're going to have to have a collaborative relationship with a school in Italy to teach those students there for at least one year so that they can come to get the final degree from your university in Australia. But Australia has to do the same thing for them. So Perry, your exchange programs, those virtual exchanges, those collaborative relationships are key to the success in the future. If you're trying to compete with other universities today, you're going to be left out in the dark. So working together, sharing information and helping each other survive through these tough times is going to be a key towards the future of education. Those that don't and try to compete, I think they're going to be, they're going to be gone in another year. And I'll, and I'll talk a little bit about that in my full strategies that are coming up pretty soon.
Well, I think, Andy, that this is where the space we're heading into. And then the question, the next, that begs the next question, who to collaborate with? And collaboration often comes with people you trust. And it's working together with people that you trust so that you can find that common baseline. I think that's when organizations like the ICE, because we've got accredited institution, there is a trust between them. And that becomes something that becomes very, very important. It's a very both tangible but also intangible thing. Because if you're developing partnerships going forward, you've got to have that.
You know, actually.
It brings us.
Yeah, actually, our next slide is actually talking about the future. And I'm going to start with the bottom one. Well, Hal being charged. Everybody remembers the 2001 Space Odyssey? Well, in the United States, just this last week, it has to be on the news around the world. In the middle of the desert, in the middle of some remote mountains, they found a 15-foot metal monolith. Have you, if you haven't seen it, go online and find it. And so the future is, the future, maybe we are, the future is already here, that we just don't know it. But one interesting story about 2001, about missing opportunities. Do you know why the computer in 2001 Space Odyssey was named Hal? Because the producers asked IBM to be the company that supported their movie and IBM said no. So they backed off one letter and said H A L, which it should have been IBM. And that's why it was named Hal in that movie. Just a little, little trivia for those people that want to know. You go look online for that monolith. It's amazing. And there is no reason for it to be there. Absolutely no reason. Perry?
Yeah, I think as we've already hinted at in today's discussion, you know, how we, what's the future of this going to look like? And some people can either take fairly clear propositions that they think that things will be much more online and that will be definitely the future. So to fill the rest of it, there'll be this question about blended and is so what blend? And the pandemic has answered those questions. When I changed institutions, I remember having a discussion, not even 12 months ago, as to why we were doing no online. And I was told bluntly, students and parents want face-to-face. That's what they're paying for. So even my suggestion about us doing one week of online blended learning, I was sort of slapped around the head. Now, literally three months later, the whole institution had to go online. So the question is going to be, where are we going to be going forward in terms of the blend that is going to characterize the next level? I think different institutions will have different choices by listening to the students as what is going to work for them. So yes, many students do wish to travel and study internationally, absolutely. And different things will work for different types of students, as well as, I mentioned earlier, for different levels, whether it's vocational, bachelor's, master's, et cetera. The question will be getting that blend and that mix right for each institution. Now, as the technology comes in, and, you know, with my other hat on, I attend all sorts of other different conferences. I always, one called AG Tech. And even last year, they were, they were talking to pharmacists. And pharmacists had come up with game technology using virtual reality to run a pharmacy. And you've got doctors who are doing operations, even in the real world, they're doing operations remotely between countries and continents. So the training of that has also gone that way. So will our training restaurants of the future be virtual reality? So these sorts of issues will become very real issues for education as we move forward. So the blend is going to be, going to be critical in that. Now, as it turns to these two other issues we've got here with micro credentials. In the case of Malaysia, they suddenly, again, COVID has spurred this on and suddenly that has now been approved. I think a lot of institutions have really not fully understood the way they've done their micro credentials. They've just basically done a salami. And I'm not entirely sure that it's where a lot of educators had visioned this. But basically, we're just cutting things up into little, little pieces. And then assuming that everyone is still going to do the whole chunk of it. So again, I think there's going to have to be some revision about what we really meant by those micro credentials. But do students want certificates? You bet. So three of us know, and we'll talk a bit about that later. Lots of students want to get certificates for having attended our 30-minute talks. That really went up much more than we had expected. So they clearly want that. Now, when it comes to education, teachers and chatbots, this is going to pose us with some interesting questions. As students are going to learn both in a synchronous and asynchronous mode, will we now find that that's going to be the future of how we're going to trade things forward? Already, I've been in discussions with an institution that we're looking, organization to work with to take our masters online. And the tutor for that weren't even going to be belonging to Somway University. That particular organization who works with a lot of different universities, by the way, not just with Somway. But that particular institution has said, well, don't worry, we will come up with subcontracted tutors. Now, if you're going to do that, what's going to be the next level? Many of us are already just as comfortable when we're talking to businesses all around the world, already using chatbots. That friendly little person that's helping us with your airline or your banking isn't really a person at all. So I think, again, there's going to be some technological challenges that we're going to have to start thinking through as well, when this education starts going in those directions. Okay. Hal?
Well, on that, on that background, Perry, I'm going to pick up on a few things. I remember speaking at one of the APAC CREE Conferences some time ago. And I was speaking about the notion of students as consumers. And I think today, the response to the questions that I received at that time, maybe that particular person that'll go unnamed might have a slightly different thought. I think there's much, much more of a realization as universities and educational institutions reform that students are consumers, students do have choice, and students are making choices that suit their particular needs, lifestyle, location, and so on. And I think one of the major drivers of global change and that's reshaping the world in the 21st century. And no education institution is immune to this. The fourth industrial revolution, a fusion of exponential technologies where silicon and carbon meet, will prove to be as profound as the previous industrial revolution, which is driven by steam, electricity and computing. The ability for an institution to transform will be critical for all education institutions to cultivate so they can shape and respond to the changing world of education and absolutely, in my view, to the change in needs of students and the student as a consumer. Let's have a look at the next slide, Andy, if you don't mind. So I'll share with you some of my thoughts. As part of this transformation and with the proliferation of social media, I think, abundant product information, online purchasing and the ability to switch preferences quickly, students or the consumer authority or power is becoming a stark reality. So students are in the driving street seat and have been for some time now. No educational institution can ignore providing and monitoring customer experience. And in this graphic, customer experience is noted as the CX. And the sector is starting to see this in the university sector as well as across the private sector. The KPMG report where this graphic comes from shows how customer experience in educational institutions might also be developed in a more complex idea of the student experience, adding in learning, the learner experience and also the provision of a personalized experience. So the age of the customer demands might be well represented by the student experience being a combination of all of that. These are some of the consumer forces that face higher education institutions in the future. Let's have a look at the next one, Andy. As, I guess, in order to survive the change in landscape of these changing customer demands, I'm going to list a couple of the key strategies being suggested by KPMG and Ernst Young in their reports. And also some of the things that we've learned over the last 33 shows of 30-minute talks and share those with you in the next few slides, and I'll be as brief as I can. In relation to strategy, how much depends on varying views of the future, depending on your own context. So I guess a possible view of the future of a higher education sector may, however, have some of these features. So the future of higher education, in my view, is borderless. Universities, higher education institutions and other competitors will be offering programs within territories that until now have been assumed normally in their competitors' catchment areas. And the opportunity is for all institutions to do exactly the same. So what might have been your traditional markets, what might have been your traditional students are now everybody's students and all institutions are competing in a global marketplace without borders. This effectively means increasing overseas offshore delivery as cultural and regulatory resistance diminishes. And I think that's key, that those changes also need to be put into place as those resistances diminish to programs that are offered online by foreign institutions. So the more foreign institutions get involved in this space and the more programs are online, I think that marketplace opens up even more substantially. Let's have a look at the next one. Short courses and degrees, I think is absolutely a demand at the moment. Fewer students are predicted to want to undertake full-service degrees. However, more students will be interested in the micro credentialing that we've just been speaking about, the competency-based education models, nano degrees and curated degrees. So unbundling of courses will be prominent with tuition fees in the future most likely being itemized. And there's been a question about, well, how do you revisit the fees structures for institutions? So in one of the arguments, it might be that in itemizing tuition fees, that could be posed separately for the teaching component, another fee for the campus experience component. If the student does want a campus experience, they might have the added cost of the library or you want to access resource and teaching facilities and so on. So the unbundling of the courses could also mean the unbundling of fees. And students, as when you go shopping, pick and pay. Students will be able to opt out of some of the aspects of university life and not pay for them. And this might counter the argument that's being used now. We're paying for a university experience, but all we are getting is an online experience. So as this proportion grows of young people who are digital natives with good access to connectivity, in my view, interest will grow in the borderless education and the new kinds of short or longer degrees. And I think they'll become much more popular. Effectively, finally, institutions will also need to be cognizant of lifestyle integration. I think it's really important that institutions move with the times and recognize that the future student has very different needs. future student has very different needs. It is most likely that we'll see the cohort of digital natives seeking immersive, rite of passage, full time, on campus, bachelor education. This will reduce as a proportion of the total student body that are currently studying. More students will be working part time, they'll be undertaking family responsibilities, wanting to integrate learning into their lives, want to be safe in the case of, of a scenario where the vaccine is not effect, as effective as we're all hoping it is. And in many cases, those students also will want an immersive experience. So these are just a few of the strategies that I suggest institutions really need to consider to survive in the future. And as noted before, business models can become transformative or they can optimise their business models. Either way, change is required in the new normal. Thank you for your time, guys. Over to you, Andy.
Okay, and you know, Alan, that those, those strategies are very good. I'm going to give my strategies and I know Perry's going to give his strategies at the end here. So let me go through my painful strategies to survive during the global pandemic. You know, the global pandemic is just the beginning. Next is the economic pandemic because right now the global economy is suffering. So my advice is step number one for universities and even personally, I'm going to say some of these things for personal is cut costs. It's you, you know, you gotta, you gotta save every penny during these tough times in order to survive. What's step number two? Cut more. You know, you're going to have to make some painful decisions in the next six months until the, the world starts getting that vaccine and people start getting out again. It's just not going to happen overnight. So reducing salaries, unfortunate but true. And so it's a key of shortening work weeks. Offer people instead of a full time, say instead of five days, work four days. And so you get a longer weekend, but you're getting, you're supplementing and helping keep everybody working. So the goal is not to get rid of people, the goal is to keep everyone. That's always my, always been my goal in business. Travel budgets, forget it. If you can't do it on Zoom, don't do it at all. Close low use facilities. You know, if you have buildings on your campus that are not being fully utilised, then you might have to consolidate. Now these, and you have to evaluate every expense that a school has, every expense you personally have in order to decide what can we do without for a while. And this is not something that every school is going to be able to do, but these are some drastic steps that I think we, we better start thinking about. And now locking down, as you know, Perry, I think we should go back to that Oxford format. One door in, one door out. And I was in China during SARS the first time many years ago, and I was at a university teaching there for a short time and they said, you're on campus, you stay on campus. You leave campus, you do not come back. So that was one way that they controlled the environment for that particular university. And if students break a rule these days, you know what? You're out of here. You're going to have to create a university bubble. And the university bubble means that you're going to have to be able to tell parents that our university is a safe place for your kids. That's what parents want, that's what kids want. Kids don't, the young people don't worry about it as much as the parents, but if you tell a parent that you have a safe campus, they'll be happy to pay for it. And quarantining students, so this is where you might have to work with that local hotel that doesn't have a good occupancy, put the students in there, quarantine them. And when they pass the quarantine, you bring them on campus. And in some schools around the world, they're testing regularly. In fact, in Harvard, they're actually testing every three or four days. Students get to self administer a COVID-19 test, which I think is amazing. Contact tracking apps, we've done a couple of programmes on that in 30 minutes. Singapore, Hong Kong has the, that you're use your phone to contact tracing. That's another thing for you. If you had a case on campus, you want to know what classes were that person in, who did they think, and you want that to happen automatically, automatically. And so if you can set up a policy at your school to freeze everything, we had an incident, everybody stay where you are until we figure out who was in contact. So all these policies and procedures are the kinds of things that you have to develop and enforce to get that business back. Now, on the other hand, students want to have a good time. They want to meet new people. That's, I think Alan, I agree with you that people are going there for that student experience. But that means you have to let them have parties, you have to have fraternities, you have to have bars. And you know what? If they're on campus, you can make a lot of money with a bar or with a young crowd. So there's nothing wrong with that because it's in a controlled environment. And that's what you're going to have to do in order to provide that experience that students really want. As we move on, you know, Alan, you mentioned it too, that parents are not happy with off paying full fees for online courses. Why would I pay the same fees for an online course and not get the college experience? Makes no sense to me. So you're going to have to offer more for less. You're going to have to give students, take 10 classes for the price of one. Whatever you have to do to keep students motivated, the comparison I can give everyone is when you used to go on a cruise, on a cruise ship as a, as a guest, they would charge you for wifi, they would charge you for every drink, they would charge you for this, if you wanted to pay, you had to pay for everything. Go ahead and go online and book a cruise today, you're going to get free wifi, you're going to get free drinks, you're going to get free everything because they want you to come back on that cruise. And once you come back, that sets the motion for growth in the future. If people leave and don't come back, and that's the same for a university, then you're in trouble. So the global economy is suffering at all levels. We're all going to be suffering because the economy is hurting, businesses are down, retail is down, education is down, travel is down, hotels are having trouble. There is no easy way out of this. I think we're all going to have to help each other, reduce costs and help each other be successful as we get through this pandemic. Now, the last one I have is collaborate or die. And I mentioned this before, I used to run the AD, AD American Degree Programme at Taylor's University, which was a two plus two. He did two years in Malaysia, two years in the US. That's the kind of thinking that I think everyone has to have these days is whether it be one plus three, one half plus 10, I don't care what combination you have, but you're going to have to share online courses and you're going to have to be creative to work together. If you don't work together and allow students to do these sort of exchanges and two plus two programmes, then students are going to say, let's take a year off, let's wait till this is over and your school is going to have problems with, with revenues. So Perry, why don't you tell us about, why don't you, why don't you tell us what you think and finish up our, our comments for the day?
Yeah, well, can I just, can you just switch the screen off so I can just share my, can you do that? We in business? Here we go.
You go.
Excellent. Okay, good. I, I, to, to pick up on that whole point about collaboration there, I think this is going to be the challenge going forward. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Good. So I think the challenge is going to be what sort of collaboration? So if we've got a network of partners, let's say through the eyesore, you know, how do you want to do that? Do you want a very close form of collaboration? Do you want a bigger form of collaboration? Now finding the, the right fit partner internationally can be very challenging. Not everybody is intimately compatible, but there may be different ways that you can find and different ways that small institutions can work with big institutions. So big institutions may not want a particular area, you might be able to be the specialist in that area for that institution if you are the specialist. So I think looking forward to some of these things, we, we're seeing, you know, a difference in terms of what's possible. So some universities have gone for very deep relationships. So for example, Warwick University in the UK and Monash have got a very deep relationship. They share courses, they have pro vice chairs at each university, they have joint faculty appointments between the two institutions. It's a very deep relationship, mainly I should say built upon research, but also embodies many other things as well. You find other institutions which have gone into wider networks. There's what's called Universitas 21, which is probably the better known, but there's many other institutions that are out there where you can actually take courses from different institutions within this network to contribute to your degree. So could there be an ICE one, for example, where different students move those, those credits? Other, as I said, there's many other different types. Most of them are quite small, seven, eight institutions. Universitas 21 is about 28 now, so that's a little bit different. There are some slightly bigger ones. But again, the bigger ones tend to be less, less close in terms of their linkages. Now already we've seen other models and this is one some of us are familiar with in hospitality and tourism where students move between the locations. Now, this works perhaps for some students in a highly mobile world, that's fantastic if you can move between Switzerland, Hong Kong and the US or whatever. And that certainly works for a market of some students who want to get those different global experiences. But it's expensive, it doesn't necessarily fit for everyone, but in a digital age, can we rethink how we do that? So when we're looking at, at having those resources online, already there are networks out there, there's what's called the Virtual Exchange Programme Network. This network's about three or four years old. Interestingly, mainly made up of top universities such as A and U in Australia, Cole Polytechnic in Lausanne in Switzerland, Hong Kong University of Science and Technology, Leiden, Adelaide, Varnigan, et cetera. Now, within this network, and I should point out, virtually none of these institutions are a specialist in virtual online learning. So when they got into this several years ago, this was quite a challenge for them. But what they, what they wanted to do is to find a way, so in this network, students can take credits from each other's institution within that. And so I think there are also ways forward and there's many different subject areas that you can see that it's being done in. So it's not like a particular, just that one area. In fact, this works across a number of different areas. So I think looking into that because it's about us accepting that there's a new normal and it's about us engaging with it, I think, as a, as a way forward. Okay, I'll just start to share that.
Perry, if I can just add some, some comments to that because I think you're absolutely right. And I think what's been suggested there is there's fantastic opportunity for the ICE members in the future to look at, look at the sharing of resources where that might be applicable and suitable to their specific business models. But also to, to look outside of the education sector and set up relationships and partnerships with, for example, movie producers, movie companies, whether they be large or small, really maximising the benefits that are out there in terms of technology. If you really want to get into the online space, you want to create world leading resources, then you might need to look at the, the sorts of things that movie studios are doing. You mentioned before the gaming industry as an example, starting to work with gamers, bringing them in to develop the, you know, the, the virtual reality, the augmented reality and all the benefits that come with that. Because one of the questions that's come up from one of our participants today is, you know, the age old question, how do you deal with replacing laboratory subjects, for example? And what, what are your thoughts there? Andy, you got any thoughts on that?
You know, actually in our business, the, the benefit is that there are hotels and restaurants all over the city where your school is. So if it's open, you better send your students there to volunteer to help, help that restaurant and learn from the restaurant that's trying to survive through this, this experience. Yes, you can do a lot of things online, but until, until you're in an actual situation where you've got to make decisions, you've got to handle the stress, you've got to take care of customers, you have to solve problems, all those things you, you know, you can try to do online, but until you're in the real life situation, it's just not the same. So I think working with the industry not only helps the industry, but develops a closer relationship with the university and the students will have the opportunity. The other thing, and we've said this in the past, if you're learning how to cook, well, you better start cooking at home. If you're learning how to clean, you better have a clean house. You know, in other words, the housekeeping is housekeeping. It doesn't matter what building you're in, all those kinds of things. If you, you have to be self motivated, you'd have to be self disciplined in order to create an environment that allows you to manage your own world so that when those skills that you do when you're managing your own personal self and your environment that you can take with you when you go to get a real job. Perry?
Look, I, I think there's going to be huge advantages and I, I made the point earlier about, you know, doctors now doing operations outside of the country. You know, an example of someone, one of my neighbours here who went to a hospital and they was given two prices. One was the human doctor and one was for the robot doctor. Interesting thing was the robot was more than the human because it was more accurate. But the issue was, was the amount of capital infrastructure for the technology at this point. Now, but of course, technology becomes scalable. And I think these are the, some of the things that we're going to be looking at, both the industry is going to be looking at and education will be looking at. Because one of the challenges often with education and particularly when it comes to technology, as we've seen with Google and, and many of the bigger companies, Microsoft, it's, it's a winner takes all situation. So these are going to be the challenges, I think, going forward with working with those. And obviously there are many parts of the world where we don't necessarily want people to have access to education, good quality education affordably, so that that will help as we go forward in what will be quite trying economic times, I think, as we come out of this pandemic.
Thanks Perry, absolutely. And I, I'd like to go back to a comment from Osmond a little earlier on in the, in the Q and A panel. We, we noted this, this, the notion of less mass tourism and his question is why? Maybe just wishful thinking? It appears to be a mantra these days, there's no doubt that it's a bit of a catchphrase. Is it an effect or a deliberate strategy? The reality is use assets or huge assets are available nowadays. And how will they be used if, if we reduce, if we go from a mass tourism to a more elite tourism model? Planes, accommodation, hotels, all this infrastructure that's, that's sitting there now. What are your thoughts about that? Perry?
Well, I think it's been, a couple of things are interesting. One is that the, the, the big planes have actually now been decommissioned. British Airways got rid of 31747s, Qantas have retired its fleet. Airbus A380s, you know, it'll be interesting to see how many of them actually get back into the air. So obviously there were some cost issues there, though the cruise industry has gone the other way. The ships there retiring, I was listening to the CEO of Carnival last night and basically they are already decommissioned 18 ships, but they're actually decommissioning the smaller ones. Now largely that's because they're newer ones, the ones that put all the money into and obviously they're thinking they may not really half fill them. So I guess the question going forward there, Osmond, is a couple of things. One is, will this pandemic just politely end as it did 100 years ago? Now, the 1920s was a great economic period. It was known, not known as the roaring twenties for nothing, until 1929, obviously in a fairly fateful day there, when the stock market fell off its cliff. And that led into a very depressing time afterwards. But the time after that, obviously a world war and then a pandemic was actually a very good time economically. People obviously wanted to do lots of things. And I suspect that as we come out of this pandemic, there's also going to be a lot of pent up latent demand as well. However, I think we're also recognising the environmental constraints of what we've done. Now, no one was able to stop tourism completely before. It was impossible. If you've been the mayor of Barcelona and said, I'm not going to allow any more tourists in Venice tomorrow, none. We've now seen, you can't stop it. So the question is going to be going forward now is that we know what too much looks like, we know what too little looks like. So as is with the three bears, where's the golden ox? What's the just right? And I think that will be the challenge going forward. And it's been a question that many, both governments, industry have always wanted to dodge going forward. But the overhang of this will always be, is it not this pandemic will be another one? Remember, there were many knocks on the door before COVID arrived with SARS and MERS, et cetera. So whether it's what we've seen in Denmark with Minks or we've seen in France with another one that's appeared, these are going to be challenges where whether we like it or not, humans tend to be the main people who facilitate the movement of any of these diseases. So being around a lot of people may not be a good idea in the future.
Well, I'm going to say, you know, I was involved with a project years ago where they built a hotel on a little island and it didn't work out. So the, the question was, what do we do at a hotel if it's not a hotel? Well, storage facility, retirement home, hospital, fishing, store your fishing gear there. You know, in other words, we better be, we better, there's a lot of cruise ships for sale if you want to buy one, a lot of hotels for sale, a lot of restaurants for sale. And I agree with Perry that there's a lot of people that will, that will grab those deals because they see growth in the future. And I hope that's true for all of us. And I think that's where we're going to, Alan, we're going to let you, let you start closing, closing the session. We went a little bit over, but we're doing fine. And I'll say, Alan, is up, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Andy and also thanks Perry. You know, from my perspective, thank you for sharing your thoughts. Thank you for sharing your, your presentations today. There's no doubt that, I think even the three of us are now thinking since we started 30 Minute Talks in terms of technology, in terms of education, in terms of the industry as, as progressed and developed over that time. I want to thank all of the ICE members and the participants today. We've, I think we've had a very good participation. Thank you for, for joining us. Thank you for sharing your time. Thank you for your questions and getting involved in today's conversation. We hope that if nothing else, we've initiated some thinking, some debate amongst the members and, and the ICE fraternity. And we really look forward to sharing more time with you, more thoughts with you and more conversations with you. And as Perry just mentioned, one day being able to sit in the same room again and have a beer together. So in the meantime, keep safe everybody and until next time, to you Perry.
Yes, absolutely. And thank you for the questions and chats. And thank you, Tom, for picking me up on the difference if I'd said UK instead of English universities. Yes, there's quite a historical difference there. So thank you for making that point. But again, thank you all for joining us. We look forward to seeing at 30 Minute Talks. We've nearly, we just went a little bit over with our 60 minutes, but obviously for copyright reasons, we can't call ourselves that. Andy?
You know, again, next week on 30 Minutes, we're actually, Alan, Perry and I are participating with Mahatma Gandhi University on an Asian Tourism Conference. And I'm going to be talking about the story of Borakai, how it went through environmental problems and now pandemic problems. Perry, Perry's going to be giving an update on the Malaysian tourism industry. And Alan's going to be telling about the Australian tourism industry. So next week on 30 minute talks will be an interesting topic. Thank you to the ICE for inviting us to participate. Thank you all of you for joining us. And we look forward to seeing you in the future. Be safe out there. And thank you again. Enjoy the rest of the day. And in the, if you're in the US, happy Thanksgiving.